It's 1:00. Welcome to the April 3 special meeting of the Punta Gorda City Council. Can you hear, can everyone hear me okay? No? I'll put this closer. Is that better? Okay. It's 1:00. Welcome to the April 3 special session of the Punta Gorda City Council. And we have to, we're going to try to move this meeting along as expeditiously as possible. We've been informed today that the event center is installing a new generator tonight, and so we have to try to close this by 5:00 so we can make sure everyone is out of the building when the power goes off.
You guys laugh.
So, anyway, yes, I know you're saying, uh-huh, I hear that excuse, but anyhow. So, I will, first, I will turn this over to our city attorney and who will present the resolution.
The first item on the agenda is going to be a public hearing on a resolution, which in a moment I'll read by title only. After I finish reading the resolution and the public hearing will be opened, staff is going to be presenting a brief overview of the contents of the resolution and background. The public comment section will begin. If each of you would come up and either of the podium, form a reasonably uniform line. When you get to the microphone, put your name on the pad in front. All citizens are going to be limited to three minutes unless you are an appointed representative of an organization, in which case the city council can give you latitude with more time. But bear in mind that if you have, if someone is representing you, that more or less waives your opportunity for individual comment. After the public comment section of this hearing is concluded, the city council will at that point in time consider the comments, make, pose questions to staff, and discuss amongst each other in this public setting, and then ultimately take some sort of formal action. So, without any further to do, Mayor, would you open the public hearing on this resolution, and I'll read it by title only?
We'll open the public hearing, but I would like to make a few comments before the public comment section begins, so.
Okay. This is a resolution, which I'll read by title only. A resolution of the city council of the city of Punta Gorda, Florida relating to the dredging project, providing authority and definitions, providing the final assessment role, providing for the imposition of the assessments to fund the Buckley's Pass dredging project, providing for collection of the assessments pursuant to the Uniform Assessment Collection Act, providing for the effect of this resolution, providing severability, and providing an effective date.
Howard, I'll turn it over to you and staff.
Howard Cunic, City Manager, can you hear me?
You have to speak, you really have to speak right into the microphone.
Don't turn your head. Don't turn my head. I will not, I will be straight like a robot. Howard Cunic, City Manager, City of Punta Gorda. Can everybody hear that?
No.
Is this on?
It's on, Howard. You need to talk directly into the microphone.
How about if we take it out?
Yeah, take it out, if it will come out.
Oh, no, then he's going to start singing.
Okay, how's that?
Yes.
Okay. What we would like to do is provide a history of the project. How we got to where we are today. I think it would be beneficial for everybody to follow through the steps that have been taken all the way up to today. Again, I'm Howard Cunic, I'm City Manager. With us today, we have Mikhail Finkel, our paralegal and assistant to the manager, Hans Wilson, our engineering consultant, Heather Ensignosa, who is our legal attorney for the project, as well as Gary Dishar, who's from our Public Works, and Rickini from Public Works, and they will be helping us out. So, we want to do a brief presentation to set the stage. So, this project has been talked about for well over 20 years. In March of 2015, and forgive me if some of you have heard some of this before, in March of 2015, at the Isles Yacht Club, over 400 people were in attendance, and at that meeting, the Punta Gorda Boaters Alliance, who had hired the firm of Hans Wilson and Associates, presented a plan for this very project. At that meeting, the plan was to go and get permitting for a navigational channel. At that time, it was called the Bird Cut Through. It's now called Buckley's Pass. And at that meeting, they proposed an assessment for the assessment district that you have in front of you now. It's been tweaked just a little bit. They had estimated costs at that time. That was the first time, the very first time, that the proposal of a specific assessment district came from the community with as many people in the room as it did. The discussion was also held in March and April with the Alligator Creek Waterway Advisory Committee regarding this very project. City Council then held a public meeting in the event center with over 850 people here very shortly after the meeting at the Isles Yacht Club, at which time this project was discussed. Public input only. And then, in June, city council decided to move forward with selection of an engineering and permitting firm to try and see if this project could even be permitted. In July of 2015, this very project came before the Punta Gorda Isles Canal Maintenance District Advisory Committee, made up of residents of Punta Gorda Isles Canal Maintenance Area. The Punta Gorda Isles Canal Maintenance Advisory Committee recommended that doing a project of this type, paid for by the entire canal maintenance district, was not the way to go. They did not approve or recommend approving that type of approach. That was all the way back in July of 2015. I only do that for historical purposes. You can see some of the other dates. October, again, all of these were done in public meetings, public meetings. October, we appropriated funds for the engineering services. In February, after an analysis of five or six options, we selected a channel location. When I say "we," staff presenting the ideas to city council, city council approving them at an open public meeting. In May, we had, we hired, and we had a presentation from our legal counsel, who specializes in special assessments. They presented what they feel is the most reasonable and fair and defensible methodology for this project, which is water access units, back in May of 2017. That was when that was presented. We also got a permitting update from our engineering consultant in May. We then awarded an agreement to establish the assessment methodology based on the presentation, and in May of 2017, we received a Florida Department Environmental Protection permit for this project. That permit runs for five years, five years, so it runs out May of 2022. The legal consultant advised us we should undertake an economic analysis as well, an independent economic analysis, to determine whether there is a special benefit for this project to that area. We hired a firm to do that. And in November of 2017, we had an economic analysis presentation. Again, all of this is on our website. It's all for public viewing. And we approved a resolution of intent to establish a special assessment. So, the economic analysis was completed, and it showed a special benefit. In May of 2018, we discussed land purchase for the navigational channel, because it was going to go through private property. In August of 2018, we secured federal permits, which is the Army Corps of Engineers permit. That runs for five years, so that will run out August of 2023. So, for the first time in over 20 years this project has been talked about, we had in our hands permits for this project from the state and the federal government. We negotiated a land purchase. We appropriated the funds for the land purchase in September of 2018. We appropriated the funds for the final design, preparation of construction documents. Again, we have a special page on our website specifically for this project. In December of 2018, we passed a resolution of intent to do this project through a non-advalorm assessment. We also submitted to Charlotte County an application for grant funding for this project in December. In January of this year, we finalized the project costs, and the estimate came in well above what the estimate was four years ago. And our consulting engineer will tell you why in just a few minutes. He's going to explain why. In February, we approved the initial assessment resolution, and then in March, we mailed the letters that many of you received, if you're in the area. And for the first time in your hands, you had what your special assessment was going to be. We will describe more about what the options are in a few minutes as well. The county marine advisory committee did not recommend funding this project. Their recommendation now goes to the county commission, who will hear it at their second meeting in April, which we will attend, and try and see if the county commissioners can put some dollars in their budget for this project, because the committee that recommended denial is just that. They're just a recommending committee. They don't make the final decision. So, here's where we are now. I will turn it over to Mikhail Finkel, our paralegal, and she will talk about what's coming up right now.
Good afternoon. So, for all of those who received an assessment letter, this is the legally required public hearing for you to provide comments on that assessment. In the event city council chooses to move forward with the assessment today, the next step would be to mail out prepayment notices. In a few minutes, we'll talk about what that, the prepayment is. We would intend to then work on the bidding contract, the contract documents for bidding. If we can get those out, get a contractor secured, they could start the project this summer to be finished by the end of the year. And then, we would certify the tax roll to the tax collector by September, so it would show up on the November tax bill. So, I'm going to let Hans Wilson speak a little bit about the project itself.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Hans Wilson. I'm a professional engineer working with the city. I'm, where's that little clicker? Yeah, that's okay. Let's see if we can get, okay. This is where we are today. This is the proposed project, and this is the final plan, which has morphed over time from what was originally submitted to the Punta Gorda Boaters Alliance. The project that we did with the Punta Gorda Boaters Alliance was basically our best effort in terms of the most economical way to get traffic from the interior of Punta Gorda Isles to Alligator Creek. It did not take into account any public feedback regarding the design. It was simply our best estimate as to how we could accomplish this goal as economically as possible. Subsequent to that, we attended a number of public hearings presented, and we received a lot of input. Input that we received included these property owners, is the pointer working? Nope. Uh-oh. Nope. No pointer, huh?
No.
There we go. Oh, no pointer? Oh, okay. Well, then, I'll try to talk our way through this. Okay. One of the first things that we ran into in the original design were the two property owners that were on the east side of the proposed cut. We had actually a straight cut going parallel with their west property line that took advantage of an existing indentation or artificially created basin. The objections from those property owners of not wanting boat traffic immediately in their backyard caused us to shift the alignment of the channel further to the west. That included more dredging. That included more resource impacts, more clearing and grubbing. In addition, Charlotte County pursued a project in Alligator Creek that actually expanded the width of the creek and increased the depth from minus five feet mean low water to minus six feet mean low water. The original design that we submitted for Punta Gorda's Alliance was for a 50-foot wide channel to minus five feet mean low water. We're now permitted for a 60-foot channel to minus six feet of water. So, again, you're dredging more material, you're clearing more land, therefore, costs more. Other things that we've had to do is adjust to the input from the boating community. We've experienced problems with Ponce de Leon inlet and sighting distance around curves. I received a lot of input regarding boaters not wanting to make hard 90-degree turns. I get that. Again, you know, my job was to try and see if we could find the most economical way to build this, but it also has to be user-friendly. So, as a result, we put these curves into the design, including a curve to accommodate the people in the canal immediately to the east, so that the transiting of this waterway was less problematic in terms of sight distance. We also adapted to the southern limit, where going to minus six, we actually had to move the channel a little bit further, dredge further to the south and the west. We also had to modify the channel alignment in yellow, moving it a little bit further to the west to accommodate Mr. McQueen and his development plans for his particular shoreline, basically preserving his rights for boating access, and still maintaining that 60-foot wide channel cut. The last thing that we dealt with of significance was that the homeowners association on Sea Edge Drive weren't real keen about having trucks taking that dredged material and hauling it through their HOA or their homeowners association. So, as a result, we're now relying on the city of Punta Gorda's access locations that they're using for all of the seawall repair work in the community as the, basically, the transport locations for the dredged material. That, of course, adds cost. And then, of course, we've got some ancillary items that came about in terms of the permitting, signage and things of that nature, that are simply permit requirements that we have to adhere to. So, those are the physical changes and some of the regulatory changes, and then let's throw in the fact that we've had Hurricane Irma, and so all of our contractors are very busy, and we also have what's actually a fairly robust economy. And in my last conversation with the contractor, aside from two significant material cost changes in the marine contracting community, my marine contractors are telling me they can't find people to go to work for them. They're having to pay more money to their employees because of our 3% unemployment rate. So, while that's a good thing overall, it's kind of tough on our cost estimate. So, those are the basics as to why the cost has increased. You can kind of add that all together, and we are where we are today. I can tell you that it won't be any cheaper tomorrow. But I am hopeful that with the timing of a lot of the seawall replacement in the Punta Gorda Isles area, we will already have contractors that are mobilized, that have labor force here, that will be looking at this project possibly as a legacy project for their own firm. And so, I have my fingers crossed, knock on wood, that we're going to get some good pricing on this project and come in below that opinion of probable cost. And if it doesn't come in below that opinion of probable cost, then you'll probably see Howard hanging me in the town square. So, that being said, I'll turn it back over to Mikhail.
Actually, this is, as Hans just spoke about, the difference in the opinion of cost, these were the major numbers that brought the cost up. So, here we've arrived. Once we receive the capital cost, which is the project cost from the engineer, we include all the design permitting, legal costs, the land purchase, advertising, and mailing, and that's where we arrive at the capital cost. The total project cost is what takes into account the collection. If it's collected over the period of time on the tax bill, there are financing costs associated with that, and that's how we arrive at the 3.148989 project cost. So, the methodology for this assessment is water access units. Water access units are defined as a dock, slip, boat lift, or any other structure for receiving vessels. It is not based on what is currently on a property. We looked at each property and then looked at the city code. Chapter 6 of the city code has certain entitlements for properties. So, under those regulations, we applied those to the properties and apportioned the assessments based on that. So, you can see there's a total of 2,785 water access units. They are assessed over 2,112 tax accounts, and then 22 of those are apportioned to parcels in the county on River Bay Drive. The city cannot assess outside the city, so we have asked Charlotte County to assess those properties, because they will receive a benefit and were identified in the benefit Here's a depiction of the benefit area. As Hans said, this, this was, or Howard said, it was proposed back in 2015. It had to be tweaked a little bit. There are parcels, including a large church parcel, the Akia Stah development, the city's nature park, that all had to be included. They could not be exempted as part of this assessment. This just shows a breakdown. We were asked how many water access units were applied, single-family, multifamily, condos vacant or not. So, this is just a little breakdown that shows how it's apportioned based on the zoning. When city council considered its initial assessment resolution in February, they elected to do a three-year, or offer a three-year collection on the tax bill. So, as you can see here, the water access unit, one water access unit is $983. That would be a prepaid amount, if someone wants to prepay it. If they so choose to have it on the tax bill, the water access unit goes up to $1,199.85, and the maximum we would collect on the tax bill is $399.95 per year. Now, we'll turn it over to the city manager.
So, over the last, since the letters have gone out, we received a lot of input. This is a summation of the input that we've received. So, let's go right down the list, because this is what city council will be considering today after hearing from all of you, or as many of you that want to get up and speak. First, one option, the very first option is, we can approve the assessment process as is, approve the methodology as is, which we've already approved the methodology, but go ahead, approve the project, get the bids out, and send out the final assessment notices, and give all of you the ability to either prepay it through, I think it's somewhere in July, or if you do not want to prepay it, it'll show up on your tax bill at the amount that Mikhail Finkel talked about over three years. Another option is we could extend the financing. Instead of three years, we have a five-year option. We could do a four-year option. We talked about a five-year option. City council can decide to do that today as well, so that will lower the amount per year if you choose that. We could undertake an engineering and legal review of a different methodology. That has been brought up by many emails and suggestions. We could do that. That means we start over, but it can be done. There is no, there is no perfect methodology that solves the whole world, whatever anybody can come up with. We've come up with, through our legal counsel, what we feel is the most appropriate methodology for this type of project. There are other methodologies out there that you will hear about in public input. We could expand the assessment area. That again means we have to go back to the drawing board and figure out what the assessments would be if we expand it. I already told you four years ago what happened when this project was brought before the Punta Gorda Isles Canal Maintenance Assessment District Advisory Board. They chose that that is not the route we should take, but we can do it. We can expand the assessment area. We could lower the assessment for each property owner by using another revenue source. Some suggested the special use fund that we have, that is made up of dollars paid for through the Fisherman's Village land sale. We have about $2.5 million in that account. We could take some of that and pay down some of the construction, which will reduce the amount of assessment that you would pay. You can do that. We could fund the entire project from another revenue source. In other words, you saw the construction estimate of 2.7 million. If we can come up with another revenue source, we could pay that off that way. That means, well, again, all these options have their pluses and their minuses, but this is what has been suggested through public comment over the last few weeks. Or, and staff is not recommending this, we could just not move forward with the project at all. Put it on hold. That is the, again, I am summarizing the comments we've received from all of you, okay? That is the end of our presentation, and I'd like our, I think our mayor has a few words to say, and then we will open it up.
Wait. We'll open it up for public comment. We have a question for clarification. Do you want to take it now?
On the slide itself? Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I will repeat the question. I will repeat the question. I will repeat it. The question was, if you prepay the amount, do you pay the interest of 2.5% per year over the loan? No, you do not. If you prepay it, if you prepay it, you do not. That is if you finance it, okay? Everybody hear that? Everybody okay with that? If you prepay it, you do not pay the interest over the loan, okay? All right.
Okay, thank you, Howard. Thank you, Mikhail. Thank you, Hans. I really appreciate everyone. I know all of our council members appreciate the huge attendance today and all of you taking time out of your busy schedules to be here. We respect you for what you have, that you've chosen to come here and be with us. And likewise, we have some procedures for public comments and that I'd like to share with you. and that I'd like to share with you, just so that we can have a respectful conversation here today. One of the things that we hold dear in our city council, and this is, since this is where the city council meeting is being conducted, it is city council chambers at this time, that we respect each person and we share the responsibility. We criticize only ideas and not people, and we keep an open mind. And one of the things, when we have a public hearing, yes, you do have three minutes to please share your ideas. If somebody has already said something that's very similar to what you have to say, and you would say, it's been said before, I just want to support that, that would help speed up the conversation and help assure that everyone gets their time. Also, we ask that there be no applause and no cheering like we just had. The reason, excuse me, but the reason is because there are people here who do not all agree, and we do not all think alike on this issue. And we respect each other. We want people to feel that like they can come to the podium and not be intimidated and not be bullied. And that was, that was on the cover page of the paper about bullying, and we don't, we don't want to do that. So we just appreciate everybody having an open mind, please, and having a good conversation about this issue because it's, there are a lot of items to be discussed. So with that, any other comments about it? Then what we will do is we will open up the public hearing. And as, as the city counsel, city attorney said, please come to either of the mics and write your name down before you speak, and we'll get started.
Can you hear it?
Yes.
I'm going to hold it. I don't think I can lean over the whole time. Is that okay? Okay. My name's Don Sabatini and... Okay, I'm sorry. My name's Don Sabatini. I have a slide pack I want to share with everyone, and thank you to the council for allowing me to go first. I basically want to say that this Buckley's Pass is a great project for the city of Punta Gorda. It gives us positive cash flow without any capital investment by the city, and the great thing is it pays for itself. Okay. Again, we're in a canal assessment district. We all use the water. And here's the problem. The canal system's growing. Punta Gorda's growing. But if you look at these 10 reasons up here, it's a reason we need the pass is to improve the navigational access to the harbor. It's another access point for the Isles Canal Front properties. It approves title exchange that will lead to better title flushing of the canals. It's a safe harbor, so when you're out in the harbor and there's a storm or you don't want to go all the way to Ponce, you have another place to get in safely and be in the canals and make it home safely. Many boaters and many boat clubs get together and do sunset lake raft ups. This gives access from many directions for that. Also, many of the people have stated that, doesn't matter where I live, I'm going to go use this pass because I'm going to bring my friends, I'm going to show them other parts of the canal system. So a lot of people that don't necessarily benefit from it by our definition will use the pass. Also, cruising south, there's more direct access to Burnt Store, Bakelia, Mat Lachey and the Intercoastal. There's also convenient access to Alligator Creek for cruising and restaurants. Sailboat speeds will be between five to six knots. We will use a rim canal and save two to three miles. And then one of the benefits from people that aren't in the benefited areas, the folks over at Ponce will have less congestion at their outlet, and it'll improve the environment over there. Also, how are we going to pay for this? Howard presented a bunch of different options up there, okay? This is one thing I'm going to propose. It's just one option. The capital cost again is 2.7. I say we're currently paying everyone in the canal assessment district right now that uses the water and the canal maintenance district. We're already paying $100 additional dollars right now until 2021 for Irma. It's only $100 more on top of our $550. If we just extend this for four more years after 2021, it'll be $100 for four more years. Everyone in the canal maintenance area per lot will pay $406 more. That's it. So you wouldn't even realize it was happening because it's just another $100 for another four years that you're already paying. I think it's a win-win. This shows a good effort between the city and the citizens working together. Property values will increase for all. I know there's many different perspectives on philosophy around that, but when Punta Gorda improves, we all improve. And another good thing is it's a great return on investment for the city. A lot of our projects we have to do, we do because of needing to fix something. This actually generates revenue for the city. So, and I'm just going to wrap up and say, it pays for itself. There's no change in the current assessment. Four-year extension would be all you'd have to do. Use the existing canal maintenance fee. I don't think we necessarily have to do any more studies because it's a process that we already have in place, but I could be wrong. It generates revenue for the city. There's no additional services to do this. You don't have to hire more police, more fire. You don't have to put streetlights in, okay? And it's already proven legally defensible. This canal maintenance assessment has been defended over the years many times. So I'm saying vote down the benefited area.
Mikhail, are you timing this?
And so I'm saying the, vote down the benefited area, and since the, since the permits are good for 2023, 2021, we still have time to do the right thing. We don't have to hurry at the 11th hour to try and use the wrong methodology. So the best way to predict our future is to create it. Thank you.
And my understanding is you were speaking on behalf of several people. That is why he took a little longer. Okay. Okay, would you please let me know when you get the three-minute timer going? It will show up? Okay. So if you can hold on just a second. It will show on the screens in front of us. There'll be a timer, and there'll be a timer that shows up on the screen above me, so you'll see how much time you have left. It's whoever, you can, we can alternate back and forth. But wait, sir, wait till we have the timer ready. You'll see the timer up here? No, when you do, when you do. You're going to have to, the suggestion is saying you're going to have to either hold the microphone or you're going to have to speak right into it like I'm doing. Otherwise, people are not going to be able to hear your comments, so. Wait, hold on. I guess it's a technical difficulty, yes. Thank you for your patience. We might be getting closer. Okay, is this, is this it? One, one second, okay.
I think it's on.
Well, hang, hang on a second. Mikhail, give us, she showed this to me yesterday afternoon and it looked different. Is this it now? All right, we're good to go.
Is this microphone on?
Yes.
My, my name is Richard Greenwald. I live on Key Largo Drive in Punta Gorda, and we have lived there, in Punta Gorda, for 30 years. I will limit my comments to the water access unit determination. We all know that the non-commercial or residential areas that are non-condominium in Punta Gorda are limited to a one-family, single-family home. There is no difference in use between that family that lives on an 80-foot seawall lot or a 150-foot seawall lot. Your use of the waterway is the same in both residences. I therefore fail to see any rational reason for doubling the assessments for those homes that are built with a more than 80-foot seawall. The assessments are supposed to be based upon benefits to the property, and the benefit to the property is the same whether you have an 80-foot seawall or a 150-foot seawall. And I would hope the council would reconsider this. I do not address the cost of maintaining the seawalls. That's a different topic. I am only addressing the assessments made for the Buckley Pass, which in general I agree with. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, sir. Okay, thank you. Hold the applause. She can help each other kind of restrain yourself.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Al Covington. I live at 3670 Ball Harbor Boulevard. I'm in favor of the project. I guess I'm one of the disadvantaged people, and I only have 25 feet of seawall, and I'm paying an assessment, but I don't care.
Mr. Covington?
Maybe other people are getting a better deal than me because...
Mr. Covington, could you please address your comments?
Oh, sure. I said, maybe other people...
Thank you. And all of you, please.
Maybe other people are getting a better deal than me because they have more expensive units, or they have more seawall or whatever. But I'm not jealous of that. I'll pay the $1,000 gladly. I paid $1,000 just to replace my Florida Pacific electrical panel. I'm getting nothing back for that. With this $1,000, I am going to have an increase in value. When I first looked at my property in 2011, the realtor said, I looked at different properties, and I said, why are the units over here a little cheaper? It's because of the, how close you are to Ponce inlet. Values are going to go up. You're going to get more than your $1,000 back through this, through this improvement. I've looked at the comps over the years from the Civic Association. They bear that out also. I'm just going to say that I'd like to see this project done. I followed it through, seen the delay from the Corps of Engineers, and there may be other methodologies that would maybe benefit me, but I'd like to see this project done this year. It's been long enough. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm John Benandi. I live in Punta Gorda Isles on 1700 Los Alamos Drive.
John, can you speak louder, please?
Okay, will do.
Thank you.
I live at 1700 Los Alamos Drive. I think the project has always seemed good for the city, enhancing our reputation as a waterfront community, and it was certainly widely supported when the price tag was something like $600,000 to $1 million. The price has skyrocketed, and the funding model is somewhat arbitrary. Many residents in the affected area do not own boats or use boats, and certainly more than half of the would not, not use them. The idea that property values will increase is speculative and may be wrong. The funding area includes properties outside the Bird section where actually the exit times don't support any benefit. Many people from outside the funding area access the canals for fishing and sightseeing and, you know, so it's not just the people in the assessment area that can benefit. Other large projects, and this is important, that overall enhance the value of our city are funded in a different way. They are funded by the people and all the residents. Downtown flood mediation work was not solely for the downtown residents, but we all paid for it. Park renovations, Gilchrist, Ponce, Lashley are funded by all of us, and street improvements, and that's fine. And so it's not clear to me why it is that this should be funded by only a select or a group of people when it looks like it benefits the entire city. The other thing is, I'm a little worried about repeating the mess that Charlie County has created with MSBUs. If we get on this path, we could be on a slippery slope. The cost of projects seem to be somewhat out of control, but maybe not. But they may grow larger, but maybe not. I think if it's truly good for the city, it should be funded by everyone, and the project should not be pursued if not. At a minimum, I think there should be a referendum or straw poll of the affected area to see if people support the funding of the project within the, within the proposed funding process. Thank you.
Sir, just put it on the table. Sir, just, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Timothy Belts, and we live on Sandpiper Drive. I really like the ideas that Don Sabatini just put forward as a, as another option. And so we certainly favor, as I said, moving forward with the project, and it'd be great if there were other ways, other revenue sources that could be brought to bear. But one that I haven't heard of yet would possibly be, if the assumption that property values will rise, that means that, that all of us will get the advantage of a rising tide. Higher property values, good news for the city, that means higher taxes and to higher tax revenue. It's sort of what's in it for the city to support this project? I mean, let's be real, that's one of the, one of the attractive elements of this. Otherwise, why go through all these public hearings and so much fun that you're all having? So one of the suggestions would be, as I'm happy to pay my part of it, I would prefer to have other residents in Punta Gorda also participate, but if that's not possible, if we go forward the way things are now, I wonder if you've considered, and if it's legally possible, assuming that property values would rise in the future, of, for those who pay their assessment, that once that assessment were paid, if there were some type of hold or freeze so that, that your future year taxes, say for maybe the next five years, you put a hold on those and say, keep them at this baseline level. The year that you pay off your assessment, you hold those, and so you get somewhat of a tax break going forward in the future. So I, we're happy to pay the amount of money. Again, we'd prefer to pay less, really like Don's idea, but if that's not possible, is at least consider some type of break going forward. That, I think that provides you another option. I know there are lots of schemes out there that are labor intensive or pretty complicated, but this would be a relatively simple one. So I just offer that as a possibility or an option for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, thank you for having this meeting. I'm Bob Whitaker. I live in the Bird section. The project is important to me because of the expense and how we're funding it. We're creating a monster here if we're not careful, because I can see very easily coming back and say, why should I pay for the pickleball courts because I live in the Bird section? Please consider that. Do not divide the city. If you notice the way we're coming up to the microphone, we look at the other person speaking, and we let them go, the appropriate person, there's not a fight over the microphone. We're a very happy city. Please do not break it up where it is us against them. If you do, Machiavelli will be very pleased.
Mr. Whitaker, Mr. Whitaker, did you sign the sheet?
Yes.
Just again, a reminder, when you come up to speak before you grab the microphone, sign the sheet, please.
Good afternoon.
My name is Matt Ezra. I live on Captiva Court in Punta Gorda. I'll try to be brief. I fully support the new approach that Don presented earlier to pay for Buckley's Pass. It eliminates the need for creating a new special assessment area with all the very legal, real legal exposures, setting of new precedents and sizable expense that goes along with using the neighbors Giblin-Nicarson proposed benefit area methodology. The approach, the new approach is simply using the current canal maintenance assessment mechanism extended to 2025. Using this method is responsible, cost-effective, fair and simple, without increasing current fees. The new method will not impose any additional financial burden to anyone currently paying the PGI Canal Maintenance District assessment. If you were able to pay your 2019 assessment, it will not increase because of Buckley's Pass. It will simply stay at the current level to 2025. Council members, please evaluate these proposals and do the right thing for the city.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you. My name is Paul Latoska. I'm from Whipperwill Boulevard. First, I'd like to say that I am 100% in favor of the project, whatever the outcome is today, and I appreciate all the work and effort that people have put into it so far.
Can't hear you.
Can you?
Sorry. I just want to thank everyone for all the work they've put into it, and we support it 100%. I guess my opinion is based sort of on what I've heard already here today about the financial implication of how it's being assessed. I own two properties in the Bird section. Neither of them are subject to a double fee. However, I feel that that piece of it is unfair to those who have more than the cutoff. I think there's an assumption made that it's by the number of vessels that you assume someone would have on 85 or larger frontage. I've seen plenty of tip lots and others that have zero vessels. I feel like that's sort of in conflict with how you assess seawalls. "You're getting into an area where we're assessing things in different methodologies for basically the same thing." Some of the things have been said before. I don't play pickleball. I pay for the pickleball. I don't use the dog park. I pay for the dog park. Very seldom use the harbor walk. I pay for it. I'm happy to pay for it. I'm happy to pay for whatever the whole city is benefiting from. I feel that people that over on the Ponce inlet end are benefiting. They often have issues with compromise to their seawall by the amount of boat traffic and the speed that people go by. I think people who go south to go boating towards the Pine Island, Bocilia area are going to definitely use the Pass much more than they would Ponce. So I feel that we are going to benefit as a whole. We are all here because we want the waterway. We should all share in the cost of it as we have done for everything so far equally, whether the city decides to kick in or spread it across the city, but I agree that it is dividing people and we are a city as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before the timer begins, I want to make sure I am speaking at the appropriate time.
Go ahead, please.
I'm a member of the... Well, first of all, I'm a homeowner. My name is Dr. Dennison Reed and I live in Wood Thrush Drive in the Punta Gorda Isles Bird section. Although I'm a homeowner with a water assessment unit, which I do have a special assessment to pay, I am here to talk about my church. I'm a member of the Congregation of the United Church of Christ on Akia Stoughth Drive. Our church is facing a special assessment in the amount of nearly $26,000 for the Buckley Pass project. The UCC Church is a relatively small church with modest resources. Nevertheless, our church has a very big heart, and we gladly share our blessings and our financial resources with those in need, including many local charities within Punta Gorda. Imposing a special assessment of nearly $26,000 on our church is an extreme and unexpected financial burden for our congregation, and such a financial burden works against the church's ability to perform its most basic mission, which is to serve those who are struggling and suffering and those who are most in need. Our church is being assessed for 26 so-called waterfront access units. Although the property upon which our church sits has been defined as benefiting from the Buckley Pass project, our church and the good work that it does derives no benefit whatsoever from this project, quite the contrary. The waterfront area in question is undeveloped and is overgrown with trees, mangroves, and other foliage to the point that I didn't even realize there was any waterfront area on the property until we were notified of the special assessment. We have no seawalls, no docks, and no means of receiving boats, nor do we have either the financial means or the desire to use our limited resources for developing the property for that purpose. Imposing a special assessment of nearly $26,000 on a house of worship that has long been committed to serving those in need may be legal, but in my opinion, it's certainly not moral or ethical or the right thing to do. It's my understanding that surplus city funds may be available to mitigate the financial burden for those facing financial hardship, and I strongly support the use of surplus city funds or any other means available with regards certainly to my church in particular, and I beseech the city council to do the right thing by utilizing whatever means are available to the city to relieve the church of this substantial financial hardship so the church can continue to do the good works that God intends for us without being encumbered by this very substantial special assessment.
Thank you, your time. Thank you.
Sir, your comments really were more addressing the second item on the agenda.
That's why I was asking for clarification.
If you wish, we will incorporate those comments into the second hearing so that there won't be a need for you to come back. If that you wish, the clerk will make note of that and include it in the record.
Fine, thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. Sir?
Afternoon. I'd like to thank Bill Oslak. I live in the Bird section. I'd like to thank the City Commission for holding this meeting today. It's very important. Everybody have a chance to say what they like or don't like about this proposed assessment. The one question I think we all have to ask ourselves today, the city council, the city manager, and others that are involved in this project, is would we be here right now if the funding formula had been split across the entire PGI canal system? I think we wouldn't be here right now and so divided over this issue. I've attended numerous meetings on this project whenever I've been down here. Keep in mind, I'm a seasonal. There's other people here that are seasoners as well, so they can't have input in other meetings that are taking place, whether it's be the Punta Gorda Boater Alliance or the Canal Board. We can't be here, and so we're at a distinct disadvantage on this. I've witnessed numerous people throughout the city and PGI speak in favor of this long overdue project, which I support. Many of these people supported the assessment to go across all users at the previous board meetings, but this has kind of been ignored. Instead, we pushed forward with a special assessment district, which I feel creates an unfair burden on a particular group of people that are being assessed solely because of an economic impact and not on a user across the board thing. I feel that this is dividing the village or the city of Punta Gorda, just like we see at the national level, and that's not right. We've got neighbors against neighbors, condo owners against condo owners. It's not the way Punta Gorda is, and that's not what I bought when I bought into living in Punta Gorda Isles. I have one thing to say. I strongly support what Don Sabatini put forward here at the very first presentation, and I would hope that the city scrapped this special assessment and instead go with the suggestion that he has. Granted, it'll take a little more time, but in the long run, everybody here will own that cut, not just the people in the Bird section. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Hello. My name is John Olson. I retired down here last year. I own condo unit 133 of the La Ramana complex at 3322 Purple Martin Drive. I do not own a boat. I do not own dockage, a lift, or a seawall on this waterway. I cannot see Buckley's Pass from this waterway, from my window. I don't feel, I don't see any way that this project could affect my property value positively or negatively. It is wrong to make people pay taxes for something that doesn't affect them. I am against this tax assessment.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is David Marshon. I am a resident of the Bird section of Punta Gorda Isles, and I'm also a boater. So I totally support this project. It will benefit me by shortening...
Can you speak louder?
By shortening the time to Charlotte Harbor tremendously, but I do not like the way it's proposed to be financed. I totally support the first speaker who suggested that all of the Punta Gorda Isles residents pay for it through the Canal Authority. I think, and I think the speaker stood right here before me said it very, very well. We're pitting condo owner against condo owner, homeowner against homeowner by doing this special assessment. Punta Gorda has built any number of projects over the year that benefited only a certain geographical...
Can you hold the microphone steady at your mouth? Because you're motioning with the microphone and then people can't hear you.
I need to move my hands. Punta Gorda has built any number of projects over the years that only benefited a certain geographical set of constituents, and we didn't finance those projects this way. Roads for development of new developments, a new fire station that helped a certain group of residents, a new sewer treatment plant. We didn't finance these best special assessments. We financed them globally by all of Punta Gorda. That is the way I believe we should be doing this, or perhaps a subset, the Canal District. Let the Canal District finance it and let us all enjoy the benefits of the project. Now, I must say, I only support that if it will not significantly change the timing. If we have to get it done this year and changing to the financing scheme that the first speaker talked of delays it significantly, I'm no longer in favor of it. But I would hope that since this is just a taxing legal issue, no new physical issues have to be discussed, that the council can make this happen very quickly and get the project going rapidly. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Diana Simmons. I'm an owner and full-time resident in the Bird section. My husband and I are both California real estate brokers with a combined experience of over 50 years. We chose PGI for our retirement dream, an attractive boating community on affordable water on the Gulf with seawalls maintained by the city. However, your methodology to assess only the Bird section is flawed, and here's why first. By charging only the Bird section, roughly 25% of the Canal District, are you creating an exclusive right for us? If we pay, will the entry be gated? And if it is to be public access and we pay, don't you have to now ask the public how they can gain access? Perhaps a toll needs to be charged? So now we get a gatekeeper to check IDs? All of this is ludicrous, but important to address is this pass will be public access and not just for the Bird section, even though you want us to foot the bill. Buckley Pass is good for all of PGI. It will attract more people, baby boomers, resort seekers, vacationers. If we all share in the cost, it's going to be about $400 each. I'm being assessed for two water access units since I'm above the arbitrary 85-foot rule with 100 feet, so I'm expected to pay $2,000, and I don't have a boat. When we bought here four years ago, we knew we were about 40 minutes from the Gulf, and in talking with our immediate neighbors, eight of us, each one of them also knew this fact, and they are in their homes for many more years. Five of us do not have a boat. In each case, the real choice was the home, its style, age, view on the canal, and that's logical because you are in your home 24/7 and on your boat only once in a while. On my canal of five homes, there are two boats, and I can count on one hand how many times in four years those two boats left their dock. 40 minutes is not an issue, and I don't think less time will make a difference. It's all about the cost of running those boats. My second point is Buckley Pass will provide an additional measure of boater safety. If the weather suddenly changes, any boater will seek safe harbor, and this is mentioned already. It will also improve water quality, more fish, more wildlife. A second access is a selling point for PGI and will attract new buyers. Finally, let's talk about canal maintenance. You have set a precedent in that each parcel in the Isles pays an equal annual assessment for canal maintenance. It's not by location, it's not by foot, so choosing an arbitrary number of 85 feet or less as a water access unit doesn't make any sense. If you feel it's time to address linear feet, then both canal maintenance and the assessment for Buckley's Pass needs to be by foot. Again, it's not just the Bird section. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Alexander Peterson. My friends call me Sandy. My address is Wren Court in Punta Gorda. I'm all for the Bird Cut. I think it's obvious that we need it. The congestion down at the current exit down by Ponce de Leon gets really crazy, and if you get a strong wind and a strong current coming through there and a bottleneck of boats and people trying to get out down the boat ramp, it can become very dangerous. So not only is this going to be convenient for a lot of people, it's needed as a safety issue, because right now Punta Gorda at the Ponce de Leon Park, on a weekend especially, is just a zoo, and somebody's going to get hurt there, and I'd hate to see that happen. The assessment as it stands, I think, is ludicrous. There are people that live a lot closer to the proposed Bird Cut than I do, and they're not getting assessed, and they will be using it because that Bird Cut will be closer for them than the Ponce outlet. Not only that, though, it's going to benefit the entire city. The argument has been made that, you know, people mention the pickleball court and the dog court. They say, "Well, anybody can use the pickleball court. Not everybody can use the canal system." Well, that's a really invalid point, because if you look around this room... Well, I for one have a bad L4. I can't play pickleball. If you look around this room, you'll see the ages here. It's pretty safe to assume that a significant amount of the people in this room cannot play pickleball either. So to make the argument that, "Well, everybody should pay for the pickleball, but just the Bird section should have to pay for the cut," is retarded. Excuse me, I shouldn't use that word. But, and again, you know, I have 96 feet of seawall. I'm just over the limit, and I got to pay another $1,000 for what is it, 11 feet that I'm over? Isn't it 85 the cutoff? So, I mean, that's just crazy, because I don't... Gee, I'm going to put a whole bunch more boats in that 11 feet. I don't think so. So I stand here also to support Don Sabatini's proposal. I think it makes sense. The Buckley Pass will benefit everybody in Punta Gorda, everybody here. The argument that, you know, we can all use the pickleball court is invalid, but everybody has access to the boat ramp at the Ponce de Leon. All the fishermen have access to the fishing pier there. They will benefit from less traffic. They'll be really happy to see less traffic flowing through there, and that's about all I have to say, but thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm Don Kidwell. I'm a resident of Punta Gorda for over 22 years. I live on Captiva Court on the Rim Canal. I'm a registered professional engineer, retired, and I wanted to say that I totally support the cut I have since the Hurricane Charlie. I think we should do it. I have a problem with the funding as it's being proposed right now. I agree with what quite a few people have said, that I think we need to go back to the standard canal maintenance district where we all pay, all share in this, and we use some of the city funds if we can, special uses funds or whatever. But the point I wanted to ask, I keep hearing that we can't delay this, we can't stop it. As a project manager for many years, I do not understand why it would take us a year delay, because I've managed a lot of projects, and I'd like to know what are the things that will cause us to delay for a year? I think if we go back to the standard procedure, I think the council could get that through. We could have it done much more quickly than a year delay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Mike Forty-A. I live at 5012 Captiva Court, right down the road from the Last Gentleman. Is that better? Okay, here we go. First of all, I support the first person's presentation. I think that the assessment should be spread over the entire community. The entire community benefits. Couple of comments. If I lived across the street, my assessment would be zero instead of almost $2,000. I realize that the line has to be drawn somewhere, but no matter where the line is drawn, is there a $2,000 difference in my property values over the years or not? I sincerely doubt it. Another thought, the more you have of something, the less it costs. The less you have of something, the more it costs. So this directly affects property values. The more quick outs you have, the less it's going to cost. There's going to be more price competition amongst those various property owners, whether you want to use Buckley Pass or whether you want to use Ponce. If you have less, then the prices go up. So I think that the assessment where you say people are going to benefit, I find somewhat dubious, because you don't know who's going to benefit and how much they're going to benefit, which then supports spreading the cost over the entire community. The entire community benefits, and hopefully then the rising tide will raise all property values, but they all won't come up equally. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Listening to the presentation earlier on the design of the pass, it appeared that the council's very receptive to the stakeholder input that they've received and to making changes.
Can you speak more clearly into the microphone?
If you hold it straight out in front of you, that's the best.
And to making changes on the fly. I don't believe funding based on who is deemed to benefit is either fair or equitable. I live in the Bird Section but will not benefit from the pass, but I am in favor of the pass, just not the assessment methodology. I'd like to know if there's a precedent for such a methodology of assessment. Going forward, will only those deemed to benefit from a project be assessed for that project? And likewise, those disadvantaged or receiving no benefit, have their taxes reduced? I'd like to see other funding options pursued, as have been mentioned by other speakers. One thing I didn't hear mentioned that may be considered is the 1% supplemental county tax. Don't know if that might be able to be applied. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Hello?
Yeah, you're live. You just need to speak into the end of the microphone.
Okay. Hello, my name is Wanda Winell, and I live on Almar Drive. First, thank you to the board for all your hard work in the Buckley's Pass project. Unfortunately, this amazing opportunity to increase popper values, shorten river access time, and environmentally help our PGI canal system is being threatened because of individuals' opinions and discrepancies in payment methods and/or timeframes. I for one can understand why a single-family, one-lot homeowner does not want to pay a double assessment for two docks they do not use. We do not mind paying the assistant. However, I do understand, and many people understand, why other people do. These recommendations that were presented today, the extension of the $100 for four years, and obtaining money from other resources, anything to help our assessment lower the cost, I think would be beneficial, I think most people would agree to too. However, we are confident that as a community, we can join forces, work together, and support the long-awaited Buckley's Pass project through the completion this year.
Thank you. Yes, it's on.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having the hearing and thank you for your hard work. My name is Richard Kirkpatrick, and I live at 3340 Woodthrust Drive in PGI. And as most people ahead of me have spoken about the assessment, the way it's divided, I'm for the project. I just think the way you've decided to divide it up for just the Bird Section to pay for it, I would rather see it passed around the community, as others have said, to just make it more fair. We really appreciate it. We look forward to being done. And in closing, I support Dr. Reed with his request for the church not to be assessed. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to say thank you, first of all, to everybody.
Your name?
Your name, please?
Oh, Mary Ann Adesani, 1430 Raven Court, in the Bird Section. Not surprised. I just want to thank you all for everything that you have done. I am totally for this project. I think it's a wonderful project. I think it's a project that everyone in the city, besides those of us within the Bird Section, will totally benefit by. I also want to say that I am in total agreement with Don Sabatini, and I want to thank those people who worked so diligently, excuse me, to try to come up with a possibility for you to consider, besides the one that you have. I have said this before, and I'm going to say it again. As Abraham Lincoln says, "A house divided against itself cannot stand alone." And again, since this assessment has come through, there has been more division, more decisive arguments, more disagreements, people frustrated over location, people frustrated over sizes of property than I have ever seen or heard of in my entire life. Some of us can pay our assessments without a blink of an eye. I have to pay double. Some of us are going to be struggling, like the widows and the widowers, who are living on a restricted income but live on the canal system and unfortunately do not have a boat, can't barely walk out of the house, and now are paying these assessments. If we're going to incorporate this in a general assessment for canal maintenance, then the logic to me would be to include it in the payment of it. There will be no gatekeeper. There will be no one standing there taking people's licenses. It's everyone's canal. We're one city, one canal system. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Please.
Hi, I'm Bill Winell, and I live on Almar Drive, 4225. And first, I want to appreciate all that you have done in this project. I know it was overwhelming, it still is, but I have listened to everyone speak, and I'm only going to speak on two points. I was previously, one of my positions was Vice Commander of Coast Guard Auxiliary in St. Mark's, Florida. I handled a large vessel. And one of my comments is going to be about the dangerous passage, which will be eliminated going out as it is right now. It's dangerous to navigate the last turns in the park with the boat traffic coming in and out and boaters launching and retrieving boats at the park. Now, that has been stated, but what hasn't been stated is, in the engineer's design, which he mentioned, and I was very attuned to it, they have corrected that where large boats won't have to do a 90-degree turn to Port or Starboard going in and out of Buckley Pass. That is a very big concern because collisions happen frequently, and near collisions in the area going out now almost occur daily. So I think that that is a big concern for all the boaters who have large vessels in here. Another item is, we have installed, we're environmentalists, and we have installed the Habitat Reef under our deck, as many of us have, for water quality, to better the water quality. And of course, the Buckley Pass will help water quality by increasing new water flow, and we're very much attuned to that and want to see that happen. And I'm hoping that this project goes through quickly and is not stalled because of financial problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Gary Satterfield, and I do not live in the Bird Section. I'd like to say that the city council, I think, has did a great job in what they've did in the methodology and how they want the people to pay for this. I've heard the number, 25% of the people live in the Bird Section. I'm going to guess most of this room is about those people.
Please direct your comments.
I am.
Okay.
I'm just pointing. I'm guessing most of those people are in the Bird Section, and those 25% want the other 75% to pay for their pleasure of having a quick access. I don't think it's fair. If the city council believes that's important, then all of Punta Gorda should pay for it. If it's great for the city, not just PGI, everybody, Bird Store aisles, everyone should pay for it, but it's going to benefit the whole city, if that's what they want to say. When I bought my property here in Punta Gorda, when I spoke with my realtor, I asked specifically about quick access. And they said, "Well, I can show you property over in the Bird Section. You'll get a lot more for your money, newer homes, but it's very poor access." I said, "No, I want quick access. I bought over in another area. I have quick access. I bought an older home and paid more money for it." But I did that consciously, and all these people in here bought this property consciously also. Their realtors told them these things. They can deny it and do whatever they want, but you people, you've did your work. I thank you for what you did, and I hope you continue with what you're going to do and go through with what you plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Hi, my name is Gardner Seisman. I'm at 5555 River Bay Drive. For many of the individuals that are in here that are not aware, 5555 River Bay Drive is considered county property. River Bay is all in the county as opposed to Almar, which is in the city. How can we move forward with a process when county residents have yet to receive an assessment? We're looking at seven water access units. That's an absurd amount for us when the entirety of the city should be paying for this, as well as this was brought up by the Boaters Alliance of 400 members that want this. What is the Boaters Alliance doing to help with this? Are they helping paying through dues, or are we just fronting the bill for everybody that is close to it? Everybody should be paying for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Dean Blamke, I live on Greve Drive in the Bird Section. I had about eight comments to make, or 10 comments, and the previous speakers took care of eight of them, so I'll just eliminate those from my conversation. This process has been a long journey. When Captain Jay Buckley started working on it, Bill Clinton was President of the United States. When I started working on this project, who the heck was there? Obama's in his first term. So I'd have to say that along the process, the city council has been just fantastic, whichever city council it's been, been fantastic at listening to input from meetings like this and incorporating that into their final mark, or one of their final product. And I think that's going to happen again. Some of the ideas that were shared were great, some were not so great, but the city council always listened. And I really commend the city councils, yours and the previous ones, for doing exactly that. But we waited a long time, and I've been at it now for five or six years since I started working on it. It's time for you guys to separate the junk from the good stuff, put it in your final plan, let's get on with building this canal. We need it, and we need it now. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name's Kim Howford. I purchased down here in 2009, didn't know a lot about the area, and ended up with a really great real estate agent, and first thing she asked me is, "Do I want to live on the water?" And I said, "Yes, I do." So away we went, and we looked at a lot of stuff down in the Bird Section. The next thing she asked me is, "You're going to boat?" And I said, "Yeah, I'm going to boat." She says, "Well, all right, you don't want to live in the Bird Section." So she showed us some other areas. I live on Villa Fermia right now. It's 12 minutes out. But what I soon found out was, everybody, I have a budget, very limited budget on housing when I was looking, and I found out that I could get a lot more house for my money down in the Bird Section. I decided to buy on Villa Fermia, and I took less of a house for a quicker out so that I could boat. Now, I don't feel good that, I feel like I took the hit then. I don't feel like I should have to pay taxes for what's only going to benefit the people in that area. And when I say that, and we talk about pickleball courts and things like that, "Oh, I'm not going to play pickleball," and we talk about how it's going to benefit the whole city. Well, if you're going to increase the tax base, then it needs to be across the whole city, not just the aisles. Because the other areas outside aisles also benefit from the city. So I feel like we're going to tax, trying to tax a lot of people who are not going to benefit from that. I've never been in Ponce Inlet. I don't have to go to Ponce Inlet. I would never go down through the cut. However, I do think it's an excellent idea to have that cut. And the guy that worked for the Coast Guard, I think he was Coast Guard, brought up some very good points about safety and trying to get in. I think it's a great idea, but I think we really need to look at how we're going to support it and pay for it. Thanks.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Michael Hirsch. I live in Seminole Lakes, and I'm standing here as the unelected and unofficial representative of the more than 50% of the residents of Punta Gorda who do not live on the water and don't use the water. These comments only apply if you decide to listen to some of the people who said the entire city should pay for this. If you do that, I would suggest that based on what you heard at the charrettes a couple of weeks ago, are that there are lists of projects that people from all over the city would like to see developed with city money. It would be wrong to suddenly take this project and put it at the head of the list and take $3 million or whatever from the 1% tax or from the Fisherman's Village Money Fund and use it to pay for this. This project has to get in line with all the others and be sorted out on its merits then. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is George Rummick. I've been a resident on Almar Drive for a little over 17 years. In that timeframe, I've seen the boat traffic go from a handful of boats a day, now 30, 40 boats going by my place every day. A lot of those boats now are not the little 20-footers, 25-footers that we used to see. We're now seeing them 40, 50, and more go down by our way. That traffic is going out through ponds. And as somebody said earlier, that's a dangerous situation as that traffic continues to go down through there and more and more homes being built, more and more homes, larger boats coming into the area. It's a potential for a serious accident. Likewise, we have Poachers Cut, which a lot of smaller boats use now to access Alligator Creek. We're also going all through there, our kayakers, small boats, pontoon boats, you've got your dinghies, and again, you've got people there that are going through at high speed. Another potential accident that's going to happen. I'm in full agreement that we need this Buckley's Pass. I do think that the payment of that should be through the whole maintenance fund. Canal maintenance right now, we've been dredging ponds for a number of years. All of the community is paying for ponds. If you start separating the districts, you've got Bass Inlet near Fisherman's Village, they don't need Ponce Inlet. You've got Pompano coming out from where Isles Yacht Club is, they don't need Ponce Inlet, they don't need that dredging, and yet they're paying for the dredging. We're now in the northern district, eastern district, if you want to call it that, the Bird Section. We're going to now have to still be paying for ponds. We won't need that. So again, I think the Canal Maintenance Fund should address the whole issue and pay for the Buckley Pass. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Can everyone hear me? Yes? Okay. Karen Turnbull, Bird Section. I've lived there since 1991, which is 28 years. I speak in favor of Don Sabatini's proposal. I strongly also believe that the entire Punta Gorda Isles Canal Maintenance District does benefit from the pass. The only benefit received by only the Bird Section would be closer access in terms of safety, recreational access to a southern exit, water quality, and then you have the decrease of boat traffic and effects, negative effects on canal and seawall that the Bird Section doesn't even benefit from in the Ponce area. The other people have those benefits that we don't have. So I believe the entire PGI Canal Maintenance does benefit and should be assessed. Again, benefits to that are that the price will go down for everybody. There would be no need for three-year payment plans. There would be no need for interest and handling fees and an enormous burden for city employees. The city could have their money upfront. People wouldn't have to worry about, wouldn't have to feel guilty about using the pass because they didn't pay for it. When I bought my property in the Bird Section, I knew I was not going to have a boat. So I specifically did not pay more for access to ponds. But now the rules are being changed in the middle of the game for me. Now I'm being asked to pay the full price for boating access, when the primary reason I even bought over there was because I was not interested in boating, which is true for many of us. And I also would like to agree with the person who mentioned people that are on fixed incomes. We've had significant increase in our canal maintenance fees over the last few years, and then to make some people pay $1,000 or $2,000, again, to burden, to cover the entire cost of something that benefits the entire canal maintenance district, I believe, is not fair. I also want to mention there was confusion as to the legality of you all changing the method to the entire PGI Canal Maintenance District as the special benefit district. Um, I also want to mention there was confusion as to the legality of you all changing, um, the method to the entire PGI Canal Maintenance District as the special benefit district, and we now know that it is to, completely legal. As Mr. Koenig indicated, it is on our list, on your list of options. Please consider that the original decision was made four years ago. The cost was half the cost it is now. It was made by a seven-member committee. We don't know who, which of them lived in the Bird Section. None of them may even be here anymore. Please consider the first proposal. Thank you.
Oh, that's loud. Uh, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Michael Strunk. Uh, I live in the Bird Section. Actually live in Clipper Cove One, uh, the condo at 2,000 Val Harbor Boulevard. Uh, I'm one of those unfortunate condo owners who doesn't own a dock. I have no rights to the docks whatsoever. There's no portion of the seawall there that I could access without, uh, trespassing on a small piece of property that's actually owned by very specific condo owners. In the letter that Howard sent out, uh, he, he quoted this state, the chapter in the state statutes about this, about how it was fair and reasonable to take common areas and split them evenly over all the condo owners. And that is very fair. But further down in that same chapter, it says, it recognizes that there are limited condo, unlimited common areas that are, uh, reserved exclusively for specific condo owners, and all other condo owners there are prohibited from using them. Uh, I'm one of those that's prohibited from using the waterfront. I have no water access at all, and I received a letter saying that I was being assessed for this. Uh, it's not a lot, and, and I could certainly afford to pay it, but it's like I said in my email to Howard, it's a little like asking me to buy them their groceries for a month. And, uh, I'm willing to do that, but I would hope that the City Council would reconsider that, not just for Clipper Cove, but for the many, many other condo owners who have no rights to the water and are being assessed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is David Scholl. I own a condo at, on 3228 Wood Thrush Drive in the Bird Section. Uh, I'm for anything that improves the city, uh, and all its residents. Um, I've heard that a rising tide does raise all the boats. I don't play pickleball, I don't use the bike trails, I don't use the tennis courts, yet I pay for these things, these amenities, which are really great for the city. And I don't mind paying for those. This cut will benefit the entire city and all of its residents. So I therefore really encourage the city to reconsider and change its funding method, uh, for this particular project, because a rising tide does raise all boats.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Uh, I'm Bill Courtney, 512 Lockaruna Court in Punta Gorda, in Burnsthor Isles. Uh, I'm here to address, uh, some questions that the council has had relative to the funding methodology, and my concern is expanding that funding outside of, of Punta Gorda Isles. I would point out that in Burnsthor Isles, our equivalent would have been the removal of the lock and the widening of the passageway from our perimeter canal to Alligator Creek. We did not at that time ask for city funding beyond Burnsthor Isles to get that done, nor did we ask for city funding when we went to dredge our rim canal. So I would ask the City Council to please remember that, consider that, that however you define those who benefit, those should be the ones who should be paying for it, not others. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Thank you. I'm Wendy Young. I live on Raven Court in the Bird Section. I just want to say that, um, democracy is very messy, isn't it? And, um, we appreciate that we have elected officials who are willing to make proposals that we as a public can then hear, review, and give you comments back. We've gone through that process. We're now at the point where you're reassessing, um, your original proposal, and we're very glad that you're now reassessing that. Because as I think you've heard, there are a lot of people, um, who live in the canals, PGI Canal System, who would really like you to reevaluate assessing across the board in the canal system as opposed to just the Punta Gorda Isles, Bird Section, and who would like you to review the water access unit idea and instead, um, assess in the same method that's used for the rest of the canal district, so that we don't set precedents that we're going to, uh, be sorry about in the future. Thank you again for serving on our council.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Uh, good afternoon. I'm Dave Fox. I live in Wood Thrush Drive in the Bird Section. Um, I've gone ahead and looked at what our assessment's going to be for our condo, and it's going to be about one, three tenths of 1%. A very, for me, very, very insignificant amount. Um, I'm not particularly concerned about how we pay for this, because I am paying for it right now. It's insignificant in my estimation, not to go and negate other people's concerns about funding. I see the building of Buckley Pass similar to going ahead and baking a birthday cake. City Council, the City of Punta Gorda, has been baking this cake for the last four or five years. It's now almost ready to come out of the oven. And we pretty much have had almost universal approval, from what I've heard this afternoon, on going ahead and building and delivering Buckley Pass. The discussion, the debate seems to be on what kind of frosting we're going to put in this cake. It's going to be chocolate, strawberry, vanilla, and we've got different opinions. That's the different funding methods. What I ask is City Council, please use your wisdom to go ahead and take all of the disparate input you have here and deliver the bake, the, the birthday cake with the correct frosting. And it's not going to be a frosting that everybody's going to like, but we do have an excellent City Council in place right now. I for one certainly trust that the decision they make will be the best decision for the community.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Karen Clark, and my husband Terry and I have been residents of PGI for 19 years. In 2015, we were among those people who were at the Event Center big meeting, and at that point, we voiced our opinion that the cut was not necessary. We were told that day that a poll would be conducted of all the residents of PGI to determine the interest in having that additional cut. So far, that poll has not been conducted. Buckley's Pass has now been approved. I'm glad. Neighbors Giblin and Nickerson were hired and paid to come up with the plan for assessment. As part of their study, they established the benefited area plan. The bills have now been sent out, and all of a sudden, many of those people who were very willing to pay it all upfront, don't want to do so anymore. It is now a good bit more expensive. I understand that, and the reasons for that, uh, raise have been explained to us. However, those in the benefited area will undoubtedly in, experience increased property values, whereas those of the rest of us in PGI will not. I would hope that City Council will decide to go along with the recommended assessment plan. And my main concern is if there is any consideration of doing something other than that today, a poll needs to be conducted of all of PGI. If you look at a map of PGI and that of the benefited area, the benefited area is one-fourth of PGI. We need to think about the other three-fourths of us, please. It's probably the one-fourth who are most of the people who have spoken today, and I feel like I'm certainly in the minority. I think I heard one other, one other person speak before me. And we understand that those people want Buckley's Pass, but there are about three-fourths of PGI who may not want it, might not care, but certainly don't want to pay for it. And it was interesting that not even those in the benefited area now want to pay for the cut. Those of us in the non-benefited area certainly don't want to pay from something, for something from which we will not benefit. And remember, the main thing, that is three-fourths of PGI that you haven't heard from.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Chuck Bettinson. Uh, I can unequivocally state that the Buckley Pass will not increase my property value because I live upstream on Alligator Creek and Burnsthor Isles. And Buckley Pass will increase significantly the congestion that I'll experience every time.
Can you hold it closer to your mouth? Thanks.
Buckley Pass will increase the congestion I'll experience every time I leave Burnsthor Isles and boat to the harbor. When we purchased our home in 1999, we were aware that we were buying a home which was a distance from the harbor, and consequently, its value was not as high as other properties we looked at in PGI. Nonetheless, that's where we bought, and that's where we've been very happy. This process has gone on significantly for four years, and as the city manager pointed out, it's gone through hearing after hearing after hearing, and I think I have attended just about every one of those hearings. And one thing that is significantly different now is that the City Council is basically not the same as the City Council was when this process began. When this process began, Burnsthor Isles Canal Maintenance was faced with having to pay for significant dredging of our perimeter canal. That was not an issue, as previous speaker has mentioned, that ever came up for reimbursement by the city. We are not one big happy canal maintenance district. There are two, one for Burnsthor Isles, one for Punta Gorda Isles. And if anything, I would urge the City Council to be aware that Burnsthor Isles is not going to benefit from Buckley Pass, and so should not pay a special assessment for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Daryl Odegaard. I live on 770 Duville. I think that this project has been called a lot of things, but what it really is, is a canal extension. And that's the way we should look at it, and that's the way it should be paid for. So if you live on the canal system, and they're making your canal system better, well, you should be expected to pay for it. The 400 people that had that first meeting, they brought this thing to everybody's attention, should have put some money up and decided that they would pay for it. Back then, it looked like it would have been a little cheaper, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is John Kelly, and I live on Greve Court in Punta Gorda Isles. Um, the one thing that hasn't been said so far is, I have attended recently a number of the long-term planning charrette, meeting, and one of the things I heard from virtually everybody is, "This is a boating community." Now, you got a $3,000 bill, and all of a sudden, you're not a boating community anymore. It's PGI. And I think that stinks.
Thank you. Excuse me. Good afternoon.
My name is Ron Dressler. I live 482 Monaco Drive, Burnsthor Isles.
Can you put the microphone closer to your mouth? Thank you.
Uh, what I have to say is mainly for Hans Engineering and the City Council, when you consider this project, bidding on this project, consider the dredging of Alligator Creek almost to the end in different spots, because I, I go through there with my vessel, and it's two and a half feet deep by some markers. It got shelled in since the last time it was dredged. And hopefully, like ponds get dredged when it needs it. This, when you meet with the county, please try to work something out that they dredge this every couple of years or whenever it needs. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm Lori Lanhart, and I live in Banyan Point Condominiums, which is not in the Bird Section. So, I'm a fairly new resident of Punta Gorda, and up to today, I've been pretty impressed by the government processes. But today, I have to tell you, I'm in shock. I've been following this in the newspapers, and I'm shocked that at the end of this process, now that the bills have gone out, you're considering changing the course. Like, how does that happen? This has been going on for years. And I think, as another woman just said, if this is out there that it's changing and now all of us will have to pay for this, I think you'll see a different makeup of this group. This is the Bird Section group here. I think you'll see all of the citizens here. And if you're going to change the course, I would appeal to you to hold another meeting and let all of the citizens come and talk about this, because now it affects us. And so far in the papers, it hasn't led us to believe that it will affect us. I have one more thing to add. I'm part of the Citizens Academy this year. Yesterday, I asked at the Public Works presentation, "How did the initial canals get funded?" Well, it wasn't by anybody in this room, and I was told it was by the developers. So if we're going to extend or build another canal, why is it being limited to certain people? And shouldn't it go to all the citizens if it's something, um, that initially no one particular group paid for? Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Thank you for...
It was on.
It was on. You turned it off.
It was on. I think you might have turned it off.
Testing.
Put it up to your mouth.
Testing.
Yeah, you're on.
Okay. Thank you so much for holding this meeting today. My name is Charlene Duggan.
Can you speak louder?
My name is Charlene Duggan. I've been a resident here with my husband for 18 years. We are boaters. We live in the Bird Section. I've read the history of Punta Gorda. It started out as a boating community. It was a commercial fishing port. And over the years, the canals were dug, I understand, by the US government. And we also had government facilities here in Punta Gorda. My point is that this started as a boating community. The most important part of this community has been boating. I believe that all of Punta Gorda should pay for this kind of activity. It's an extension of the canal system. And if that isn't possible, the Sabatini method of paying for this would, I believe, be a good idea. That's pretty much what I have to say, but all these other amenities, the pickleball courts, the tennis courts, the swimming pools, the parks, all these things came later. But the most important part of this, and why I believe people moved here, was because we could live on the harbor and be in a boating community. And that, I think, should be the most important part of the consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, and thank you for allowing us to speak. My name is William Day. My wife, Marcia.
Can you hold the microphone up to your mouth, please?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
My wife, Marcia, and I reside on Tohe Court in Punta Gorda since 2009. We moved here for one reason mainly, the boating community. We've owned sailboats. We've now degraded ourselves to power boaters.
Uh-oh.
The, uh, the gentleman from the Coast Guard that spoke about the, the concerns going out ponds with it being crowded, I can speak to that personally. That may be some of my boating skills, but it has been at times very difficult, or you've actually had to back off, uh, to allow boats to pass at that corner. I am 100% in favor of this new pass, Buckley's Pass. The funding, from my perspective, is fair for me. I have a single C unit. For some of my neighbors, they have a smaller lot, and they're paying more per foot. Some of my neighbors have a slightly larger lot, and they're paying for two units. I know that's the challenge, that's the challenge that you're faced with. I'm sure that you could come up with a reasonable method to solve that concern. I just would recommend that this moves forward. As the lady last spoke, we are a boating community. Many of us moved here because we're a boating community. In our spare time, we may even play pickleball. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Hello?
You're good. You're on.
Okay. My name is Dennis Warriors, and I live in, uh, Punta Gorda Isles. And I'm grateful that there are several other people here from PGI that are also expressing their comments. A couple of things. One, I've heard a lot of people, uh, make the argument that, well, first of all, let me back up and say that I think Buckley's, the idea of Buckley Pass is a very good idea for those residents of PGI. Uh, I've heard a lot of people identify the similarities between the... between the benefit that Buckley Pass would have relating it to the pickleball court. To be honest, I think it takes a lot of mental gymnastics to make a correlation like that. I don't see where the benefit for Buckley Pass would be to those people residing east of the tracks, nor, as a gentleman from Seminole Lakes commented, that there would be no impact, positive impact, on the people living there as well. As it didn't, because it does not, is not a direct benefit to those people, which was the same argument used by the Marine Advisory Committee a couple of weeks ago, when they decided that they should not provide $500,000 to support this project. And their, their argument was, is it did not directly benefit the people of the county. I would make that same argument for the people of PGI, or not for PGI, but Burn Store Isles, in that to attempt to expand the assessment to include the people living in Burn Store Isles, that you are doing the same thing. You're trying to make a correlation between the benefit, a direct benefit being to the people residing in Burn Store Isles. I don't see where that, that would be the case. I think in the future also, that you tend to be, tend to open Pandora's boxes to other groups or areas in the city wishing to have special treatment for funding of different projects that they may decide to begin or initiate. And then lastly, I think that the, one of the other speakers mentioning the dredging in Burn Store Isles and the removal of the locks at the entryway to BSI, we were not provided any funding, or I should say, we provided the funds for both of those projects, and because those projects benefited the people in Burn Store Isles. No one outside of Burn Store Isles provided funding for those projects, because it did not directly benefit them. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Thank you for the opportunity. My name's Deborah Deegan, and I live in the Bird Section. I recently sent a note to our Vice Mayor Matthews that I believe she may have shared with you. I basically wanted to tell you, I mean, I'm in just slightly over 85 feet, so I do have two water units, and I'm happy to pay for it. I don't mind at all. And whatever decision that you come to today, I, I only hope that you continue on your current trajectory to get the cut completed. Thank you very much for your work.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Bill Hughes, Burn Store Isles. In the beginning of the presentation, Howard put a slide up that's saying there may be an alternate method of funding. I'll speak to you now as the past chairman of the Burn Store Isles Canal Advisory, and today I'm the vice chairman. During my tenure, we increased the width of our lock. We dredged the perimeter canal, and we're in the process of widening the lock again because of the shortage of waterfront properties. When the seawall falls, we don't have lots to stage the equipment, so we're going to have to widen the lock once again to bring the barges in. So we're paying our own way. I have no fight with the people what they want, but I think you should not do other public funds, because if we can pay our own way, I think the people of PGI and this project should pay their own way as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, and thank you.
Please hold that up to your mouth. Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Thank you for taking this afternoon, which is nice, spending some time listening to us. I have a little different approach to my thinking on this benefit area within the, within Punta Gorda. I honestly believe that all property within the area is unique, and people buy property for a number of reasons. I, for one, didn't want to be by the mangrove areas. I wanted to be further out. I'm allergic to insects. I really don't care about the distance it takes me, the time it takes me to get my sailboat from the benefit area out Ponce, because that's the time I get my sailboat ready for sailing. And if I'm doing day sailing, I don't care if I'm north. If I'm going for a longer sail, I'm going south. I don't care. I go to marker one, I go to marker five. My point being here is that all property, no matter where it's, no matter where it is, whether it's in Punta Gorda, California, et cetera, they're all unique, they're different, and people buy property for different reasons. Some want a different view. Some want a sunset view. Some don't really care about the distance to the harbor. So I would not, I do not see the, the advantage to people who bought property for reasons beyond travel time out Ponce daily on the past, to incur an added burden of expenses for something that really they didn't buy into. And now we're saying to them early on that you're going to benefit for this down the road, so we're going to charge you more because your property value is going to go up. Highly speculative about that. So I would say, having said all that, that I, I agree with Donald Sabatini. I think his presentation is spot on. I would definitely agree with his idea about spreading the cost over the entire Punta Gorda Isles area, not just this particular designated benefit zone. So thank you very much for listening. Have a good day.
Your name, sir?
Thank you.
Pardon me, I'm very sorry. Donald Krasny. I live at 1355 Jacano Court in the benefit area. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Dr. Ron McNeil. I did fly in from Illinois for the meeting and thought it important. I do not go out Ponce. My boat, I can get through Poacher's Cut. But I agree with Buckley Pass 100%. And the reason is, from an environmental part, it helps the fisheries. It cuts down on the fuel used as the boats, and I did see 50 boats at Christmas time behind my house. It cuts down on fuel. It, the prop damage that occurs, the wake damage, not everybody goes four miles or five miles an hour. And people working on their boats while they're going out, it's an interesting kind of thing. So from an environmental standpoint, better flow for the fisheries, better flow for the canals, which is good. And then, from a boater's standpoint, it saves mileage on the boat, time on the boat, gas, and don't tell me nobody leaks oil and gas, whether it's a diesel or gas engine. All of that's an environmental issue and could be a significant legal issue environmentally, because there isn't out. When these canals were designed, we didn't have the kinds of issues we face today. That's one whole section. The other section, the argument isn't, is it good or bad? The entire argument really centers on something quite differently. How do we pay for it? I'm willing to pay my $980 today. Not everybody can do that. I think it should be passed, the proviso, including how it's going to be paid for, with the idea you can always do an amendment. Having worked for the University of Massachusetts Dartmouth and the UMass system, or University of Illinois, you can amend anything. To figure out a way to address some of the issues that are brought up, that can always be done. And those are significant things. And then at the voting box, you can always deal with it later. All of us can, right? Better permit. But I would suggest it be passed with the idea to be amended to address whether it's a tenure span with interest, five years, some of those kinds of things, the church issues, et cetera. So thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Hi. My name is John Four. I live in Burn Store Isles. I am not for a citywide assessment. I am not for anybody in Burn Store Isles paying for this. And I think if you are going to change the assessment district, which is what a lot of people have asked for here today, then I think you need to hold additional hearings, and I think you need to put this to a vote. And I, I think a lot of people will back me on this. One last comment, I find it hard to believe that you all are here putting a final vote on a project which you don't know what cost. Okay? This project has been around for a long time, and I'm hearing, "Oh, my goodness, we don't have any labor. The prices are going up." I mean, we're talking about by a factor of five. I mean, somebody ought to have a better calculator than that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Linda Wolf. I live at 1217 Akia Stopp. I wasn't planning on speaking, and one thing I have to say, maybe comparing apples and oranges, but I've owned several properties in my life, and I've always paid school taxes, and I've never had a child or grandchildren, and that has never been a problem for me. Also, I do not live in the Bird Section, and I live next to the church. That's about all I have to say. I'm willing to go forward with this project. I think it's a good project, and I'm willing to pay for it. I'm also willing to have you look at a couple of other areas that was mentioned by the very first speaker. I thank you for all your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Yes, my name is Dan Osborne. I live at, in Partridge Drive, which is obviously in the Bird District. I have one question. Since we've heard that there is interest in supporting a more general assessment-